Calling the meeting in order.
Calling the meeting in order for the two hundred and forty second session of the tenth council. June twenty ninth, twenty twenty one, six P M being held at the Bowen Center fifty-two Bagley on A Michigan forty-three four-one.
Carter.
Present.
Miller. Idella. Shramsky. Taylor Burks. Waterman. Williams. Mr. President, we have.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. President, I mean, uh, Mr. Clerk. Authorization to excuse council members Waterman and Williams.
So move for personal reasons.
Thank you very much, we have moved in support, Mr.
Miller. Idella.
Yes.
Shramsky. Taylor Burks. Carter.
Yes.
Five years, no names.
Great. Um, moving to the approval of minutes from June eighth, twenty twenty one.
The agenda first.
Oh, my bad. Prove the agenda.
So, so.
We have movement support.
Who's the support, ma'am?
Start to move here.
Miller.
Miller, okay. Idella.
Yes.
Shramsky. Taylor Burks. Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Okay, now to the approval of the minutes of June the eighth, twenty twenty one, formal meeting.
Shramsky. Taylor Burks. Carter, yes. Miller. Idella.
Yes.
Five years, no names.
Thank you. Just in case, was there any question from anyone on, on any of these meetings? You go through them? All right.
The next one is the June fifteenth special meeting.
Yes, approval minutes for June the fifteenth, twenty twenty first, special meeting on the budget.
So if you can do all of them at once, I'm gonna.
Yes. Go through each one and get some questions comes up.
Um, we can.
If you like, we can go through all of them with one approval.
One by one or?
We can go through one through six.
I don't know, I would have to defer to the attorney on this, can we approve them all?
It is appropriate to approve them all in one motion.
One motion? Okay. So then you want, do you want to amend the current motion to approve the?
Yes.
So approve the June fifteenth, twenty twenty one. Special meeting budget. June fifteenth study session. June twenty first, special meeting on the budget, June twenty third, special meeting on the budget, and June twenty fourth, special meeting on the budget.
So unanimous?
Taylor Burks. Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Idella.
Yes.
Shramsky.
Yes.
So all the minutes are approved.
Wonderful. We go open for public comments?
So we have like two people.
Six sixteen.
So the first individual is, uh, Robert Bass.
Hold him over there.
I hear you. I hear you.
Thank you. I do believe that that alleyway is, uh, city owned at the end of, uh, Motor Street and Rapid. Now, problem being, the neighbors are doing a great job of cleaning up their yards and keeping them in fine mode and everything. And now it falls on the city to do their job and their responsibilities. We've endured over the last five years, I brought this up for five years. Now, we've endured all the excuses. About the land bank, about the banks, about us owners, uh, absentee owners of property. We've endured all of that, and it's time out for the excuses, especially when a city employee does not return calls. Or, or, or even give an answer to why the city is not taking care of that property. They want to be reimbursed for the cleaning up of, of sidewalks. We've got this foliage problem that has existed for over five years, but it's getting more prevalent. Because it's all over the city, not just in District One, it's all over the city. Where the overgrowth is growing over onto the sidewalks and they can't walk down the sidewalks. Oakland County has a law that they will stop you for walking in the street. They have used it here. So what we want, we want a moratorium on, on, uh, on the homeowners. Residents in Pontiac. For the tickets. Stop giving them tickets. If you're not gonna clean up your act, you're not gonna make them, uh, commercial people clean up their act and do what they're supposed to do. Why do you keep bothering us? We're paying our taxes, we're cleaning our yards, we're paying for how our yards cleaned up. But all of these overgrowths, all these vacant homes with growth, somebody owns it. The city owns that, you got, you got your side now. And the street just in front of it. If it's the sidewalk, it's your responsibility and we pay taxes for you to take care of it. If you're not taking care of it and we have to take care of it, then at least. When a committee of people or somebody in the neighborhood is trying to do your job, at least come and give them some bags, papers, or something. At least give them an answer to why you're not doing your job. And with that, I will send everybody an email making this a form of request. For moratorium on ticket residents, not commercial buildings, not commercial owners. Just residents, back up off of them until you start doing your job and making sure that these lots and stuff are clean. Thank you.
Next individual on the list is, uh, Mark E. How.
Yeah, he's the deputy mayor, she doesn't, we don't allow for employees to speak.
Well. I mean, my right to speak in public comment.
We don't allow employees to speak during public comment.
I do that, I need that in writing, how's that denying me as a, as a citizen for me to speak to the public, whether I'm an employee or not? So.
We actually have it shut down because, because employees were speaking.
Well, we can get Mr. Chubb to speak today.
Yes, I've previously advised, the Open Meetings Act is very clear that a member of the public shall have a right to speak in public comment.
And that is inclusive of employees of the city, so long as they aren't on the clock. That the city council then did take action solely to prohibit people from speaking if they were on company time.
Well, let me just say this before you get nasty with me, I'm doing these rules from the last three years, if this is new. Okay, so after five o'clock, and if I'm not an employee, how do I speak to my city council? Can somebody give me that at least? I'm still a citizen and resident, no matter what Garland says, if I'm an employee or citizen or not, I need to ask my colleagues former. So how do I, as Mark Holland, not deputy mayor, speak to you guys if I can't do a doing public comment? I have a right, I pay taxes just like you guys, so why do I voice my opinion?
You know what? There's no disrespect, Mr. Holland, but the way we normally do it, and that's the way they've been doing it ever since I didn't sit here, is that you are, um, what was our? The lady that we had before, who did you sit up here with, what was her name? You are not considered, once you're elected and in position. If you're gonna be the deputy mayor, you're gonna be sitting up here with us, and then when we get ready to close the comments, that's when you come in. Think about it, we, I never make any response to the audience until it's time for me to speak there with you. I don't.
That says you my councilperson?
Yeah, I don't.
I'm glad that you responded, and so I will.
Mr. Clerk, with all due respect, uh, please endure your three minutes.
Yeah, you go ahead and speak.
Well, let. Me and Dr. speak, I didn't know that the rules have changed since I've been gone the last thirty-six, thirty-eight months, I'm not trying to get you guys upset. I, I will endure to the rules next time, uh, this job is new to me as deputy mayor, but I'm not speaking as deputy mayor right now, I'm speaking as Mark Holland, fifteen eighty, couple B. Stride, fifty-year, uh, member of Pontiac. And all I wanted to say to you guys is, on your agenda, as a citizen, as a person, the author of the youth, uh, along with President Williams, the youth village. I had the opportunity to go over to the youth center and see over two, three hundred kids over there, uh, all mixed, all races, all nationalities playing, uh, with the, uh, Pistons, the Detroit Pistons organization. So, uh, for my personal, uh, colleague and, uh, person that represents my district, Mrs. Lori Miller, uh, Doris Taylor Burks, uh, Ms. Mary, uh, Peela, and Mr. Randy Carter. I, I'm asking you guys to look in your heart and change your minds about this month to month, and I'm gonna tell you why. Because if you go over there and see these babies and you put them out by Friday, they don't have nowhere else to go. And I went over there first, you know? It's over at that youth center. Uh, so I just asked that you guys change your heart and position and give them at least a, a, a month or two so they can finish their program. I know I'm late to the, to, to, and you guys, I know I'm coming eleventh out, I've been speaking to that, but I am speaking to what I saw today. And I do know it's on the agenda, and I'm just asking, can we change your hearts and minds and give those babies another couple months in that facility while we work on something different? And thank you, and I didn't mean no disrespect, I didn't know the rules would change, so, uh, as the interim, and I heard it clearly, interim deputy mayor, I will not use this podium long, no longer for this, if that's the rules. But I just had to put out to the public and to everyone, uh, that those children, and I ask that you guys go and see and participate with those guys, they would love to see us over there. Uh, thank you very much.
Mr. President, that concludes.
Pro Tem.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm being told that, um, citizens are not able to hear this broadcast, I've gotten several text messages indicating that they haven't been able to hear.
All right, then, I guess, again, we need to pause so we can clear up the central difficulty. Ken?
So you did have one other person.
Thank you, everyone, um, my name is Tony Sula, I'm the program director of the youth rec department on the Boys and Girls Club side of things. Um, thank you everyone for allowing me to speak, um, excuse my appearance, like Mr. Holland mentioned, I've been at Pistons basketball camp all day with our youth. Um, it's a great thing happening with Boys and Girls Club and the Detroit Pistons franchise. Um, we've had more kids participate, we've had over two hundred kids register for the program. Um, the camp basketball program runs from nine A M. to noon, lunch is provided every day. After the basketball camp, we have a, a game truck, um, for video games, and then we have STEM activities and other activities that we're running for the kids. Um, earlier today, I emailed all of the council and including mayor, inviting you guys to our community and awards day to wrap up the camp on Friday. We would love for you guys to come and see the camp in action and have a pizza party with the kids and celebrate our kids, they'll be receiving awards for their time at the camp this week. So I'll also give you guys a chance to meet the Pyrex staff and the Boys and Girls Club staff formally, and along with our community partners and the ownership, ownership group of the Detroit Pistons. Um, for the summer, we already have over two hundred and fifty kids, um, registered for our program, um, that is supposed to start Monday. We've been advertising, letting parents know that our program will start Monday, our only issue is, we don't know where we're going. We want a safe spot for the kids that we continue to have, we do have pop-up and sports activities coming, we're just not sure what to tell parents when our camp is supposed to start in less than a week. Um, we do have, like I said, we have pop-up programs, we just need a main hub for our kids. Um, I appreciate you guys listening and we hope to see you on Friday. Thank you.
Mr. President, just, just for the record, I know it's been a while since we met in person. If you want to speak during public comment, you must sign the signing sheet prior to the start of the council, uh, meeting. Going forward, if your name is not appear on this list, you won't be able to speak.
None of us received it. I already have, I took mine before I left.
Well, uh, again, for the record, if your name is not on the list, you won't be allowed to speak during public comment, you must sign in prior to the meeting. And then the last person on the list is Veronica Taylor.
Uh, good evening, citizens of Pontiac, my name is Veronica Taylor, I'm a precinct delegate for nineteen. I'm calling all of you all, asking y'all to please return your absentee ballots back in the mail. And read your ballots good because we need you all to sit there and read that ballot and go over it correctly. As well as on there, we have a prop A, and we need you to read it carefully to, may God bless you, and I'm praying for this whole city of Pontiac and asking us to try to come together as one. Thank you.
I just received another text saying they can't hear anything.
All right. So will we have a copy available if we had to rebroadcast it to the public, or do it, or is it, is it on Phil's end?
Trying to address that. One of the things that, uh, Phil has particularly told us and has asked you, and we presented that agenda item to you previously, council, is the fact that our system is twenty years old. He had requested some additional equipment to bring that up to date, to allow for these broadcasts to occur uninterrupted and so people could hear. Uh, so council needs to pass that amendment, we need equipment, right now, the equipment he's using constantly breaks down, twenty years old, and it's put together with bubble gum and, uh, wire right now. So council, please consider passing that amendment so we can get some updated equipment so people can hear, simple as that, thank you.
I'm sorry, everyone, I would totally disagree at the moment, I mean, this, having a Zoom meeting or anything else can be handled with a simple telephone, it doesn't, it doesn't warrant, that's, that's outrageous. It's something so simple, minute, that's, that's causing this to happen, it's either on Phil's end, I'm pretty sure the broadcast here is fine.
Sound on Facebook, but yet there's sound on the city website, just for clarification.
Okay, that's sound like, sound like Phil has a, Phil has a problem. Phil could easily rectify that with his, with his own phone. Put it back online, all right, Mr. Clerk, we can either pause, try to fix that, since, uh, the public's not hearing us correctly, then, uh, we'd be in violation of not having a.
I believe they said this, the sound is on the.
Yes.
Pontiac TV, so you can move forward.
Oh, okay. Great. All right, all right, the ordinance, uh, ordinance items, ordinance number seven, adoption of ordinance regarding parking in commercial vehicles and other specified vehicles and equipment in residential streets prohibited. Taxi cab exhibit, exception, parking of commercials, parking of commercial streets for one hour permitted, exception, temporary parking mobile homes, motorhomes. Parking campers and couple, their coaches on residential street permitted. Get to that one. My colleagues, I'm pretty sure, you guys had already discussed this at the corner meeting.
Mr. Pro Tem, on behalf of this chair.
I was just gonna say, we discussed this already, I noticed this on a study session tonight again.
Yes.
Yeah, it's study session, and Patrice wants to vote on it, she won't be here until next week, she's home ill.
Okay.
So we'll carry this until it's a formal session.
All right.
Try to do it on study session before an infinite one.
All right, so we'll, we'll, we'll move it to a formal date.
Yeah.
Next week.
This is a study session.
All right, Mr. Clerk.
And if you would like, Mr. Mr. Pro Tem, if you would like, I'm sure Attorney Chubb would explain it for us, he's the one that wrote it.
Attorney Chubb, would you like to speak on it?
Tony, will you speak on commercial?
Is there anything else?
I apologize, Councilwoman Peeta, I can't hear you.
Will you, will you speak on the commercial vehicles, please, the ordinance that we have, it's a study session.
Sure. Good evening, council, and thank you, so this is a ordinance that was requested by Councilwoman Peeta, and I, I did draft it, we based it largely on a similar ordinance, um, from the city of Detroit. And what we're really looking at here is an ongoing.
Since we talk about commercial.
Well.
Want to be specific.
I mean, I would think that that's generally a non-commercial use, so I don't believe it would include what is typically called a white flag, right?
All right, thank you very much, I'll just make a note of it. All right, we'll move on to a formal session to vote on it, sir.
This is a study session, president, we're gonna vote, we're gonna vote next week.
Okay, all right. Okay, Mr. City Clerk, the resolution to approve the job description of Assistant City Clerk, Reg. Alice.
Thank you, Mr. President, so actually, you can take items eight and nine on together, these are the job descriptions since we didn't, uh, meet, um, last week. These positions have been approved in the budget, so you, since this is a study session, you can vote on the items, uh, next week. Um, our job descriptions have to be approved by the, uh, city council.
All right, and what the questions?
So you can move on to item.
Item number ten, number ten?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Department of Public Works, number, item number ten, resolution to approve a one-year extension for Great Lake Contracting Solutions, L L C, for a roadway maintenance program. Somebody wanted to play to me with the roadway.
Sidik is here for that.
Mr. Bill? May I speak to them?
Yes.
So this is a, uh. Yeah, so Great Lakes Contracting Solutions, they do our, uh, emergency roadway repairs, um, if there's any concrete patching that needs to be done, or, um, you know, sewer repairs on an emergency basis. That contract is expiring at the end of, well, now, uh, it just expired yesterday, and we're asking for a one-month extension on that.
Mr. Bill, I have a question.
Uh, sorry, one-year extension.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
What it is?
The, uh, so Great Lake, uh, this roadway maintenance program, who did the, uh, the paving over the Great, uh, Sterling Lake Estates? Who did that paving over there, Sterling Lake Estates?
Oh, that's a, uh, that's Paymore, that's a different contract.
Okay, because. Because they haven't finished. Are you aware that I haven't been able to speak with you, so I haven't even responded. So I'll, I'll get you while...
So I drove out there, they, I know they have some cones and stuff laying out there still, so they need to pick those up and, and do some cleanup there, but they have, they have paved, they've completed paving out there.
From what I'm told, for some residents, they haven't, because it's, the ground's kind of not like smooth. I went over there a couple days, two days raw, and I kind of see what they're talking about. I think you need to send somebody out there. A little problem with that paving right there.
I mean, I, I was out there myself yesterday, and they've completed paving out there.
Okay.
But I can meet you out there. We can talk about it.
Is there any type of performance included inside this agreement for this maintenance program?
We do a contractor assessment each year um before we recommend, so that, that's in here in your packet as well.
I guess my question is, have we had them before? Are they new?
No, no, these are, they've been with us since 2018.
That may not be good, because some of the things they're doing, are they, are they a part of the crew that's doing the sidewalks over there on Perry Street?
Who is that? Paymar or Great Lakes?
With uh, the one where we, for us today.
Uh, Great Lakes?
Yes.
Are they part of what?
Uh, they're the part of the, the crew that's doing Perry Street sidewalks.
No.
They're not, who's doing that, you know?
Perry Street sidewalks? I mean, I think Consumers Energy is working there.
Okay, because I know someone's doing sidewalks over there.
All right.
Thank you.
So I would just ask that the actual uh, extension agreement be a part of the packet when you vote um next week.
We can add that for next week.
Yeah, so since they, we're in effort in the clerk's office, we um, is to improve our record retention, so we have the actual agreements as a part of the agenda. We can make sure that all those documents are signed, so the clerk's office will have them.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Clerk, would that be the same thing for number 11 as well? It is not included.
I'm looking at it all.
You gonna present that, Mr. Doel? Number 11?
Number 11 is a, this is Great Lakes Power and Lighting. This is a different contractor. They do our street lighting. Um, their contract actually expired in January of this year, and so we're, they've been working, they've been working for us still on a, I guess, on an expired contract, and we're hoping to get that extension for them. Uh, both of these contractors have agreed to keep their pricing the same.
Are they part of this group from, is it called CAPCO? I mean, it's the city of, uh, north of here. It's C.A.P. CEO, is that the same group?
They're from, they're from CAP.
CAP, K, K-PAD? Okay. So, so have there's been any written performance on them? I mean, they, they, they doing some, some, some shoddy work. I tell you that personally.
So their, their performance assessments in the packet as well.
Yes, we, I, not, not being argumental, I'm just, I'm just curious. I mean, after each one of these job performances, somebody needs to be evaluated, because either the lights are working...
They are ready, that's why they have the assessment.
Yes. Need a week to the end of the year, though. All right. All right, Mr. Clerk. I'm good with that.
So, so again, Mr. President, if the actual agreement could be part of the packet...
Yes. Thank you.
And we'll bring that next week.
All right, planning. Resolution to approve a special...
Randy, uh, and you may need to point a purpose before the people over there on Walton, because that light is out, Mr. Doel. Over there uh, for Great Lakes, uh, for Sterling Lake to come out.
Oh, okay.
And there are some things we need to share with the public.
Yes, as a matter of fact, uh, yes, we can. As a matter of fact, uh, Ms. Miller, you, I mean, Councilwoman Miller, we should go ahead and explain to the public in your district exactly what's happening. We've been working on this together. You need to know.
And uh, I'll start out, and Randy give the technical thing, because I called the Roy Commission. That light is very, very important to the residents over there coming out. Plus, I got some call from Walton Academy, that school has to start, that light has to be working and working because it hasn't. Now, I just want the residents to know that that light caught on fire last week, the pole did. So I went over there, and I talked with them, and at that time, of course, they were working on it. It's a week later, it's a week to the day, because it happened last Tuesday when I went over there. And I'm not getting response from the Roy Commission, where when I called them, they say they're not responsible for the light. Okay, then I called DTE, DTT, he told me that uh, it's looking for seven to 10 days. I'm gonna go where I went, and I'm, and I get done, I let Councilman Carter finish, because he got enough different response than I did. But I did ask them, you know, sometimes when I go in other cities, I see when the lights are not working, they have like a portable, where they can put something out of there, because I went over, like I stated yesterday, I've been over there two days straight on Walton, and they can't get out of it. It's very dangerous. And they're talking about some weeks and to get that light working. Is there any way we can get anything portable over there to help the residents get out of there? Because it is very dangerous spot. And for the school, if it starts soon.
RCOC does our uh, maintain traffic signals. I, I'll talk to them about the possibility of something portable. Um, just understand that difference.
It's okay, it's better than the light being taken. It's, it's very dangerous in there.
All right, I'll check, I'll check with RCOC.
Okay, uh, moving forward over there, at the corner of, at the Sterling Heights, uh, Sterling Heights Estates and um, and Walton Boulevard, yes, the telephone poles, the utility poles did catch on fire. But at the same time, on the 21st, we had 1,200 people with our power roll trailer park. After that, DTE decided that, that because the people have been harmed for almost four days, they decided to postpone installing the new telephone poles to, that control the, the, uh, the municipality lights. That's where the delay is. So it's, it's nothing, even though uh, uh, some of us, council people, have been blamed for uh, for neglect. It is not our problem. It is uh, DT's problem, but DT decided to show some sanity uh, to the residents that they've been out powered for four days, they want them to have power, and, and, and in the coming week, they, 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 they plan on taking a minimum of four hours to shed everybody's power off, including the, uh, the major companies, till they can go ahead and install the new uh, utility poles. Uh, the other half of the problem, which is that at Walton and Telegraph, our contractors, whoever's doing Walton Boulevard, cut all the underground power lines.
That's how you get on that.
Because they embedded in, 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 in the approaches of the driveways. So therefore, we're gonna have intermittent power for the, for the next month between uh, Telegraph on Walton Boulevard, between Telegraph moving on down to Joplin, as they keep cutting concrete, till they get that half of the, of the street, which, which would be the uh, the um, eastbound street, eastbound Walton, until that whole slab is repaired. Then the lights will be repaired.
I, I had not heard about that.
See, that's what I'm saying, that's too long for them to go with that.
I'll check, I'll check with the contractor.
I'm with, I'm with them every day.
Okay. I'll check with them.
All right.
And yeah, regarding the DTE poll, that's, that's the holdup right now is the, is the...
It's gonna be a while, Mr. Doel. I appreciate you sending an email and...
So we have an overhead power issue, and we have an underground power issue on the same street.
Sure.
All right. All right, Mr. Clerk, we can move on to the um, uh, yeah, planning? Sorry about that. Uh, 6:45. All right, Mr. Byrne?
Uh, yes, uh, good evening, Protem, uh, Mayor, uh, Counsel, and Madam Mayor. Before you is a revised, uh, we're looking for your approval of a revised resolution for a bistro license located at 47 North Saginaw. If you remember correctly, this was in front of you, and you did approve a similar bistro license back in 2020. Uh, with their conversations moving forward after that resolution, and thank you for that, uh, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission uh, had requested changes to include the business license name of 47 North Inc., not related to the Pontiac Little Arts Theater, uh, and also some select language also in regards to that resolution, as regards to the type of business or liquor license that they're getting. So with that, uh, we did take it back to the planning commission back on June 2nd of this year. Uh, they did make a recommendation to you to approve, and we're here tonight to get that approved, so we can get uh, 47 North Inc. uh, moving forward with the Michigan Liquor Control Commission uh, with their bistro license. Thank you. And be happy to answer any questions.
I mean, Byrne, I mean, right now, I mean, I could speak real quick, it's all the conflict of the ad, the address where the plat is.
Uh, the business license name is 47 North Inc., and yes, it is located at 47 North Saginaw, but that is their business license. And that is, actually, if you remember correctly, when we did the social district, and we had to identify businesses within that business or social district, we did have to come back to you, because we did have to change, they're doing their business as, we had to give them their business license name, and that was 47 North.
So, does this make a grand total of, I believe the number was 13 downtown, or does this make 14?
No, this has, this has nothing to do with the, this has nothing to do with the social district. This is, and, and, as you remember correctly, bistro license ordinance, this is uh, merely dining. They have to maintain a certain percentage of dining revenue compared to liquor sales, and that is what they're, they're seeking here for a bistro license, has nothing to do with the social district.
Is there a limit to how many bistro licenses there will be in a downtown area?
Uh, right now, we have two. Uh, we have Fillmore 13, and we also have the Alacant.
Okay, is there any, any speculation or habit of, how many should we have? A maximum of four?
Uh, I...
Your saxon, before it gets out of hand, I mean, we have a purpose for you in a minute.
Uh, we don't have any uh, requirements, but you have to think about in regards to what other restaurants do we have right there existing? Hard to say. I mean, it's hard to say in regards to what's gonna happen in the future, in regards to redevelopment of sites in the future, in regards to restaurants. There could be a restaurant owner that moves in, already has a liquor license, he might not, he might not have a liquor, he might not need a bistro license.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Byrne. Any other questions? Alex?
I have nothing but support for this.
Megan?
Okay. All right, Mr. Clerk?
If I could ask for approval tonight and rescind the rules, that'd be great. I appreciate it. And I'm sure Karen Jorgensen, who is owner of 47 North Inc., would also...
And in that case, I'll, Mr. Clerk, next, for suspension of rules, we can, we can make this happen tonight.
So you need a motion to...
I, I made the motion just to suspend the rules. This is no different than when we were at, if you want to know, like the 2010, we all sat on the patio, we all ate, and we all drank.
Okay. Um, okay. Let me call a row.
Yes, please.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Petola?
Yes.
Schramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks? Okay, so five yeas, no nays. So now you need a motion to um...
I saw move that way past res- resolution for 47 North.
Right.
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Yes.
Schramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks? Five yeas, no nays.
I guess we're going for a round.
So that resolution is, um, okay?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item number 13, the Pontiac Youth Recreation Enrichment Center Pyrex. Item 13, emergency resolution to mitigate expected damages through an extension of a lease agreement for 425 golf drive.
City Council, now I'm coming to you as Deputy Mayor, interim, and uh, I, I hope and pray that we have a for the next few days. Uh, I, I, again, I ask you guys to go see those children over there, and I hate to just up and uplift them and put them in a different location, uh, so we can agree to at least give a three-month uh, extension, uh, to, I guess they call it Pyrex over there, that's a new terminology that was bestowed upon me. But if you look at the resolution, uh, the resolution has changed somewhat, counsel, uh, and also, and I also wanted to work with my councilperson, Gloria Miller, I definitely want to have a conversation, because the Ewalt language, as you look, has been put into this next resolution, uh, as the mayor has uh, put us in charge of getting that rec center evaluated and uh, getting it to the citizens. And so we put that in this resolution as well, to let you know that the mayor is working on a permanent location, I'm working with the mayor to get a permanent location, and we have started uh, looking toward that permanent location as lo, and we have also reached out to uh, Rosemary Bear and some other legislators to help and seeking aid, put some appropriations into the funding and financing to assist with this rec center. So I'm coming to you humbly, seeing that I was, like I said, one of the authors of this, um, youth village, I, I went over there, and I've been spending time over... To, next three months.
Yes.
Can I ask if he would explain, he just stated that the mayor has permanent inclusion. What is the permanent inclusion?
Well, permit... By the city of Pontiac and not by... Sir, uh, used to be a community center, uh, the mayor has told us to look, uh, bringing that back up to code and putting our babies, uh, in the baby Ewalt center. And that's the part also in your resolution, that that will be executed, uh, if the council agrees upon it.
Um, we also have this, these, the studies that were sent back out to today. There is several million dollars involved in that.
Right.
So the question is, is do we have those several...
Do we have the money?
I'm sorry, boy.
Do we have the money?
That's what I'm saying.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Do we have the money?
I'm sorry? Ms. Sharp?
Uh, I, I just wanted to say, um, on behalf of that council president, I know he wanted to, uh, he thought this was gonna be a study session, and so he thought that you guys were gonna vote on this next week. Um, but if this is council's pleasure, but as if you decide to suspend the rules or not, but I'm just letting you know that he did, in fact, want to be a part of that. Secondly, um, I did forward to all the council, the feasibility study that was done just in May with uh, various centers. And the resolution that you all received, I don't believe has to be, I mean, it's council's pleasure again, but I think you can separate the issues. Uh, if you deal with Ewalt, if you want to go further with Ewalt, as I thought that was the pleasure of council some time ago, uh, because you were trying to pursue Ewalt, you should separate that from the resolution.
Right.
The issue of the uh, current location, that is separate from, again, whether or not you pursue Ewalt. They're not linked, if you will. And just to be mindful that if, in fact, you guys decide to go forward with uh, the three-month extension, realize that the amount is actually as a holdover rent, because it's 34,000, I believe, which is 13,000 extra a month. So that would be 13,000 additional times three. Then what you were paying, the base rent was 25, 26 dollars. That's what you were paying under the contract that's attached. This is asking for 34,000, I think, per month. 39,000, I'm sorry. Just keeping that in mind.
Protem?
Firely, we advise that the... But extending the lease agreement would avoid a 50% penalty on the holdover status. You only become a holdover tenant, and the city's a tenant there, if we extend our occupancy of the property without a valid either extension or continued lease agreement. And so if we're able to suspend the rules tonight, and this council were to approve the three months, and administration's not asking for an open-ended uh, aspect of this, we're not asking, the month-to-month would have been more open-ended. Uh, I did submit today to you uh, some language that would be amended, and speaking with Minister Holland and others about if the council was... Uh, I did submit today to you, uh, some language that would be amended and speaking with Minister Holland and others about if the council was amenable to wanting to expedite. Re-searching further what an alternate site would look like, but what really is before you tonight, and I agree with Ms. Sharp, Attorney Sharp. Really is the question of, of the city does not have the plan, uh, by tomorrow, because tomorrow is the last day of our lease to cancel the Pistons basketball camp. We have hundreds of instruments in the facility and yes, there could have been some prior planning as it was budgeted for years to purchase the facility. It's simply not a feasible scenario to say that within the next, even since last, last meeting agenda, that we could have properly planned to move three to four hundred children in the summertime somewhere else. And so what we're asking you is, please avoid the penalty of being a holdover tenant. If we don't vacate by, by close of business tomorrow on, on Thursday and Fri- or on Friday, when they're holding their ceremony. That would, would trigger the holdover rent aspect of the lease. If the council suspends the rules and approves this tonight, tomorrow we'll execute, the mayor will execute a three-month extension, which will continue the hard terms of the lease at twenty-six thousand dollars a month, only for three months. In the absence of that, we would become a holdover tenant. The city would by law incur that additional penalty. Uh, I'm here to attest to you as a representative and good faith, we all want the city to do well. It will take two to three months to effectively reprogram this and move from the center. And that's why it's this three-month extension to allow the time to adequately do that and avoid what would be an additional thirteen thousand dollars a month of rent. But it would also include additional penalties. If the city were to not vacate the premises and Mr. Byerly or Dr. Byerly had to take action under summer proceedings to evict us. The city would be liable and responsible for a tremendous amount of additional fees. And so I'm here as always being honest to say.
Mr. Chubb, I would like to speak for a moment.
We need, we need the three months.
I, I'm not Chubb, I'm Mr. Gil. I have to say this and this is, I came from rec and so this breaks my heart to say what I have to say, but I'm a person, I mean what I say and I can say what I mean. I've been over to that rec center and what's, a lot of people not understanding, it's not even safe for the kids to be in the building. It was, there were reasons that we took the kids out of the building in the first place. It wasn't because we didn't like kids, I love the kids. I want to, and you know, I hear what you're saying that to give them an extra three months. The mayor been knowing for quite some time that the kids had to leave out that building. I've been over to the boys' club on Columbia. Bet that wasn't sheer. I've been myself, I, I know Carter has. Probably some of my other colleagues, we've been trying to locate a place before this moment come. You know, when you living in a apartment house, you do have a timeframe you got to get out. They don't say come to me and give me a extension and then pay extra money. That's kind of like, not make a lot of sense. This is taxpayer monies we using. I love the kids. We had mentioned months ago that put the activities outside, we got sports. My kids grew up in the rec, baseball and all of that. We're not going to use the kids as a political ploy to put them, they got to go. They've been knowing they had to go for quite some time. So if someone tell me I'm in their house and I got to get out, believe me not, I'm packing my bags, I'm not going to do it the day of. So we asked the mayor before we passed the budget last, last weekend hearing, she said she had all this stuff out, she had this on the agenda. I haven't seen anything as of right now, what is the play for the summer for the kids? What are they going to be doing, where are they going to be? Because see, I went over to the boys and girl club on West Columbia where I wanted the pool for the kids. And so I talked to Ms. Lee and things like they was materializing, next thing I know, nothing. Nothing. And, and, uh, Mr. Holland, I understand you, I, I, I get what you're saying, but the kids are caught up in the middle of this. We appropriated money for the kids, they could go out in the park. My son played at Galloway, old Ewalt baseball field. Open those fields up, let those kids go out there and play until we got a ten million dollar facility coming from United Shores.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jesus, how nice. But at the same time, and I'm in five, but that shows you that I love my whole city. I'm not going to use money that we got sitting outside for a use in the, for the whole entire city. Ewalt is come with a big price tag, big, and we need lots of money. I have been sitting here for the last three and a half years begging this mayor to open Ewalt Center. We have had, I have been in needing personally, people with cashier's check in front of me. With thousands of dollars want to take that center and make it a community center. She said, no. So I have to ask myself, why are you doing it now? Is it election time? I don't play with my, my people, I don't. I don't play politics when it comes to district five, I don't do that. Right now, there's a lot need to be done in that building, that building, it has set, think about it, Holland, it's set there for at least four, four years now with me.
Two thousand and ten.
It's, it's there, it's a lot of issues wrong with that building. And it's not fair to take the citizen's taxpayer money just for one building, one slot, when we can build something for the whole entire city. Right now, I have to put Ewalt aside, even though that's my district, but it's just the right thing to do. Because I represent everybody, even though I'm in five, it's just the right thing to do. You can put the kids out in the summer, out in the parks, let them play and then the other kids, they, United Shores assured us by October, hey, our kids going to have top of the line. I went to Auburn Hill, my granddaughter playing out there. We can have everything anybody else can have, but we got to stop playing political game with these kids. We got to stop doing this. Don't do that. I do not play with my people when it comes to this kind of stuff. Ewalt Center got a lot, millions, that feasibility study is overwhelming. But if we had to did something, and I'm sure Ms. Peterla would admit to it, three years ago, we would have had Ewalt Center open. Now, it's just like a, a vacant house. Long as you ladies sit, worse than it got.
And I agree with you.
Yeah.
If we didn't, if we knew then we had money, we could have done Ewalt Center. But somebody brought to us eight twenty-five and we did stay. Because there were three of us that sat on the subcommittee, myself, Miller and Burks. We sat on that subcommittee over at youth center. And we seen the buildings, we were over there, we talked to them. There were things that they didn't have, things that they needed. Um, there were things that they did have, there were things that were beneficial, but the long run come, they had more problems than they did. Positive, now I know what the problem is right now, it's not where the kids are going to play, it's where you're going to store the stuff. Because you have the instruments, you have the balls and you need a place to keep them. But that's something that, in all honesty, the mayor knew this was coming and she should have said something to her staff. And they should have been looking for another place. We do know that the president just sat here with us for weeks, if not months, to talk to us about the old soccer building with WHRC. Our United Wholesale is working on to upgrade for us to be able to use that. Um, Megan, comments?
Is there any alternative site that you could use now for the basketball camp?
That's it?
There's, there's not a say within the city that can accommodate that. And to the point that I'm in support, I think the administration is fully in support of understanding that United Wholesale Mortgage and that facility and others will become online this fall. And what we're asking is not for some open-ended extension, but to get, allow us to work with these great people to get these kids back to school. And yeah, it is an expense and councilwoman, I completely agree and sympathize with, with the frustration I'm sure you and others feel. But the practical matter is this, is that the city has hundreds of kids that are committed to awesome programming in this city. And we're going to transition to United Wholesale, we're going to find a new permanent location, it might be a brand-new build, it might be from the ARP money. But in the meantime, effective tomorrow, the lease that we have on this current facility expires. It's going to expose the city to, to needless extra expenses as we do this. And so my, uh, ask as a representative, legal counsel for you that's been asked to try to solve this is, I just need a couple of months that these kids can finish the programming and we go to United Wholesale and we finish this. That, that's all.
I'm going to say thank you. Uh, uh, my opinion, I would say no. I said it, no, I said no before, it's been a waste of fiduciary money for the, for the taxpayers in Pontiac. It's been closed since last April. We don't have the accounting of the building and the use of monies, of village money for that building from last April to this April. It wasn't occupied, the kids popped up, that's fine, they can pop up at, at one of, at one of the schools. I mean, it, it, it's, it's only a simple little program, but there's no reason for us to be held hostage with eight twenty-five golf drive. All right. I'm done with it. Uh, Dr. Taylor, did you have any comments to say? That I, I would, I would say is that, uh, we, uh, I don't plan on voting on tonight, we can vote on it next week when the president's here.
I don't have.
Cut me off like that, Randy? I, I just wanted to ask you a question regarding it.
Is there any other, anybody else want to line up, just ask for a question?
Oh, I just wanted to. It's true. Politics, I agree with you, uh. You know me as well, I, I don't play politics and I'm just like you as far as passion for the city. Uh, I can't help what happened before I. What I've been doing since I've been elec- uh, been. Far as inventory and the city still on the Ewalt Center, that's the only reason why we're looking at the Ewalt Center. But that still has nothing to do with these children. Uh, in the. That still is not the city's building. We're still using someone else's property to entertain our kids. So I'm just going to ask you guys, see, the, I mean, what's, see right now.
That starts, yeah, our storage centers.
By next week, you can go ahead and separate.
You may have to turn around and, you may have to turn around and use the storage center because right now.
It'd be cheap to put it in storage.
Yeah.
Here you guys, one person speak.
My microphone died. Hello? What we were saying when we're talking amongst ourselves, you might have to use a storage facility. And we have plenty of those here in town. And I'll tell you, there's one in Waterford, actually, it's right across the street on Dixie and Telegraph.
Just add one more thing, so.
Pro Tim?
Yes.
If I may, just to kind of respond to that, if you think about it, the rent was over three hundred dollars. So you don't have the rent anymore. All of the utilities and the extras that went along with the building, you figure that's another hundred thousand. Therefore, I just want to draw council's attention to the fact that actually, in the very beginning, when it was brought to you about Wisner Stadium. Uh, council decided not to go with Wisner and instead you guys decided to have the programs at Murphy Park. Right. Where Ms. Anderson had many programs, it was beneficial, the children had fun. This is not saying that you want to cut out the program. Right. This is just a physical location and what's brought before you actually is an issue of storage. So the point of actually reducing the amount of the village money is so that you guys can work it out and try to find the location. In the process, that money that is not being spent was the money that you would have paid for rent. So you don't have the rent. So it's not cutting the program, it's cutting the rent.
Mr. Chair.
There you go.
And after what I read on Facebook today when people were talking about the youth program and how we are not working with them. And I sent you all that email, I copied it, I pasted it and sent it all in an email. So you all know what's being said out there about us? My vote is no.
Mr. Chair, may I speak to this issue?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
I would like to first, uh, put some correction about notions here that have been across the table. Uh, one of the things that's been said for not using the youth recreation center, uh, as we've asked for an extension, so that we don't have to displace the children. Uh, we have had an overwhelming response to our activities that we have planned for the children. The basketball camp was full to capacity three weeks ago. It's supposed to go all week, extremely popular, we got lots of kids who are coming for that. Only that, but that's just one of the programs we've had. We've had to go ahead and plan in advance, all the sports programs. The, uh, we're glad that United Shore has offered the, what used to be the ultimate soccer arena, but that's not going to be ready till October. Now, what are we going to do with the kids right now? You promised and people passed a village in November two thousand and eighteen to provide youth recreation and enrichment activities for our children in Pontiac. And we have a fiduciary responsibility and a conscientious responsibility to do that. We have staff who has prepared those programs. Now, the other thing that's been said not to use the building at eight twenty-five golf drive because it's not fit, that is entirely untrue. This building has passed the inspections as a, uh, children's care agency. We have had to pass state inspections, inspections. That has been renewed just, um, late this spring. So that means we've passed the same inspections that any school has to pass. So I wish it would stop saying that we are providing unsafe admins for the kids. That is entirely not the case. We are licensed as a state, by the state, as a childcare facility. I'm proud of all the things that we are able to offer the children in that facility. All the rooms we have, all the programs, all the partners. Uh, we're happy for United Shore being a partner, we've brought in others, we've brought in Sports Pack, OU, so many partners who are able to provide that opportunity. So I hope the, um, city council will be true and faithful to the children of this community by continuing to provide them a place to operate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Pro Tim, can I just make one comment?
Uh, before, uh, before that, I want to remind that we need to have the sign taken out of Phoenix Center.
Yes, please.
It's totally disrespect.
That would be the administration.
What about the one at City Hall? But right now, the way we're talking, we're honoring her signs because she's the one that puts the signs up that says that we are not moving forward with youth.
I just, I just wanted to say, I think that it was just not responsible actually to have that type of program and continue past the
date that the lease was set to expire if there was a possibility. You knew what the lease has been at the location. So it kind of really wasn't responsible to do that and put that out in the public that this was going to be an option, when it was a possibility that it wasn't going to be an option. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Clerk, we can, yes, can deal with this in next week or vote. Uh, the, um, communication from the city clerk, line number fourteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just want to inform the, the public, we do have a municipal primary election on August third. Absentee voting has begun, it started, um, last week, Monday. So you can vote in person absentee in the clerk's office, Monday through Friday, eight-thirty AM until four-thirty, um, PM. We will have, uh, weekend hours on July thirty-first and August first. We'll be open from ten AM until four, um, PM. The, uh, drop boxes are all operable, um, once again now. So we have drop boxes in each one of the seven voting districts. So there is a, a drop box right here at the Bowen Center, City Hall, the fire station at seven-eight-seven West Huron. Harrington Elementary, Kennedy Owen School, the Ruth Peterson Center and the Walt Whitman Elementary, um, school. So all the drop boxes are open twenty-four hours except for the one at Harrington, um, Elementary, that's open from six AM until, uh, six PM. And that's because they closed the gate at Harrington after six PM.
Oh, gotcha.
So, um, voters can, uh, return their ballots to the, uh, the drop box.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Do they have to be at the drop box in their precinct or can it be another?
You can return your ballot in any of the seven drop boxes.
Thank you. Also.
And we encourage you to return your ballots by the drop boxes because mail is moving slow and once you put your ballot in the mail, there is no way we can control it.
Thanks.
Now, another question for you. I heard through a, oh, through the viewing of one of the elections, you are moving precinct seven and eight for the general election?
Yes, so we don't want to put that out. Yes, the way voters, yeah. But yes, that is true. So, thank you.
All right. All right, item number fifteen, Caesar Chavez Provisioning Center appeals to Medical Marijuana Commission?
Yes, so I did want to, um, alert the, the mayor and the council. We have received, uh, three appeals, so, um. People who apply for a provisioning center license in Caesar Chavez have went through the hearing officer, a process that has ended. And, um, you can further appeal to the Medical Marijuana, uh, Commission. Three, uh, applicants who were not ranked in the top five have decided to appeal to the Medical Marijuana Commission. That's the Dixie Depot, Lauren Investments and PGS Holdings LLC. Uh, the issue is, is that the, um, members of the Marijuana Commission haven't been disclosed to the public. The commission is a four-member public body and its meetings have to be open to the public. Mission has to, to meet, um, to establish its rules. And the rules have to be approved by the city council prior to me being able to forward those appeals as required by the, uh, ordinance to the commission. prior to me being able to forward those appeals as required by the ordinance to the commission. So I just wanted to alert the public. And I cannot issue conditional approvals to those applicants that were ranked in the top five until after the appeal process has been concluded with the commission.
So, Mr. Clerk, is it fair to ask that after the appeal, is it possible to have the ranking of all seventeen of the applicants minus their name on how they were ranked?
So actually, you have the rankings now, you have the original rankings. Part of your packet, there were seventeen applicants. The original rankings, after the hearings with the hearing officers, the rankings changed slightly. And that is also part of your packet as well. But to these applicants that are currently in the top five, again, I cannot issue them conditional approval until the process with the Medical Marijuana Commission has been resolved.
I just want to reiterate, what I meant by the rankings, the rankings are the points given by planning, the points by zoning, the points by security, points by DPW, points by your office, which is very small. For the grand total of one hundred and thirty points, there has to be a way of looking at how the overall was calculated.
So the way the rankings, anybody who wants to see the rankings, the scoring, those can be released to the public. Those are foible, it's just the contents of the application cannot be...
Right.
But the actual scores and how each, what points they got as it relates to any category, planning, community...
I would like to have it redacted, their name, their name and company should be redacted, and even their, even their ranking of one to seventeen or one to twenty-four.
Well, that's all public information. It's just the content of their application, and then the comments that the reviewers made, that's not subject to FOIA. But the actual scores, that's foible information. And some people have requested. At this point, that's what I'm saying, the process, so I'll just go over briefly. I released the rankings for Caesar Chavez on March the second. In the way the ordinance with applicants from, had fourteen days, which was March sixteenth, if they wanted to appeal their ranking, so five applicants appealed their rankings. They had a hearing before the appeals hearing officer, which is Grewal Law. The hearing officer conducted those hearings on April twenty-sixth. He made a recommendation to myself, and I accepted all of the hearing officer's recommendation. I issued a final decision on May twenty-first. And in the way the ordinance is, it gives applicants thirty days, which ended on June twenty-first, to appeal to the commission. So now that they've appealed to the commission, the commission needs to hear those appeals. The problem is, the commission has not been appointed to mine now. So that may be something that the mayor...
A point of order on that, that's incorrect. And the clerk pleases, a point of order, Pro Tim. Administration has been waiting for more than a year. The commission has been identified, because of the length of time, just of the process, the mayor, working with the city attorney and myself, are prepared not to move forward. The clerk's office has done their diligence, the hearing officer has made recommendation, the clerk has acted. Now that there's three files, the administration now has the ability to move forward. The commission will be properly noticed to a public meeting, they will accept the responsibility that will be transmitted to this council, because by rule, this council has to adopt that commission, those rules. That process is all ready to move forward. We're working very closely with the clerk's office. The city attorney is the attorney for all of this process in the city, including the clerk's office and their actions. We've got that all settled. So I don't want to have a misimpression that it's not ready. It is completely ready to go, we've identified what has to be done now that the clerk's office has gotten to this stage. Now it goes to the commission, which is prepared and ready, that will come to a future meeting in the very near future of this council, as we had always planned, and as we had represented three months ago when we were prepared to move forward at that time.
So again, you just need the names, the names of the commission have not been released.
Original commissioners were identified more than sixteen months ago, anticipating that these announcements were going to be made, as indicated from the clerk's office, May first, two thousand and twenty. Those individuals, now that we do have confirmation it's moving forward, need to be reaffirmed that their commitment. All four of them have asked that until such time as this process is moving forward, they want to reaffirm. And so I'm not going to speak for the mayor. I have that process on per behalf with the assistance of the city attorney. That will be all brought forth to the council as per the ordinance, so all of you will have all of that information. But now, we are where the clerk has completed his process, we're moving forward. That will be noticed as a public hearing, all of you will be notified, we're not keeping any information. But because of the discretion of those individuals have been waiting for sixteen months for this process, we're going to reaffirm their commitment, call the public hearing, adopt the rules, and bring that to council.
When in a week, when in two weeks?
That will be...
My anticipation for this council tonight's a work session, next week is a formal session, so I'm anticipating the rules would be that we would bring that at the following meeting as a work session, so that we keep in accord with the rules of the council.
So that will be the meeting in two weeks?
Yes.
So that would be... So that would be the...
Yeah?
July thirteenth.
July thirteenth.
Yeah, all right.
So then, prior to July thirteenth, the commission would have had to have been appointed, sworn in, and met before the council can take actions on this rules.
All right.
So thank you for adjournment.
All right.
Thank you, everyone, the meeting will adjourn at...
Seven twenty-four.
Seven twenty-four.